Welcome to Tuesday Cafe. I'm Sean Conan and we are broadcasting live on March 19th, 2024, from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. Today, we will continue our look at the 2024 elections. We're going to hear from four candidates who are running for the District Seven Countywide School Board Race in Hillsborough County. This election isn't until August, but we're bringing you this forum now. It comes courtesy of the Tampa Tiger Bay Club. And maybe you heard WMNF's Chris Young's summary of it on Friday. So thanks to Chris for recording this whole event. Last month, we heard from candidates in two other districts. You can listen to that or watch it. You can listen to it on our website, WMNF.org. So today, we're going to focus on the District Seven, which the incumbent is Lynn Gray, and she is being challenged by Jen Flabot, Johnny Bush, and Karen Bendorf. And I'd like to hear from you. Do you know who you're voting for, or what education issues are important to you when you make your decision about voting for school board members? You can email DJ@WMNF.org. You can text 813-433-0885. This is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from WMNF in Tampa. So we're going to hear this first clip where the four candidates will introduce themselves, and then they will answer an audience question about private schools. This is Tuesday Cafe on WMNF Tampa.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm not known for being quiet. My name is Jen Flabot. I'm running for this seat. I am a concerned mother, a parental advocate, a fierce, fierce, fierce advocate. Let me preface that. I'm a former homeschooler, track coach, a businesswoman, and entrepreneur. I'm the mother of three boys. I have one college grad just this past June who graduated UT Knox Pre-Med and is living his best life in Nashville, Tennessee. I have a middle schooler and an elementary schooler, both in Hillsborough County Public Schools. And I've seen firsthand the need that we have to have change on this board. I have seen glaring concerns over the current board's fiscal responsibility, the lack of transparency, our infrastructure issues, as well as, thank you, as well as the critical problem that we have in school with our weakening curriculums. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Bendorf, and I'm running for this seat. My husband Jeremy and I have been married for 24 years, and we have six amazing sons. Our oldest three graduated from Hillsborough County Schools. Our younger three currently attend Hillsborough County Schools. My husband Jeremy is the pastor at our church in Plant City at First Assembly, and he is also a safety director at a company here locally. I am a teacher in Hillsborough County. And as a teacher in the classroom every single day, I am in the trenches, seeing both the successes of our district and the challenges that we face. Our challenges are many, and they're important. And there are some key issues that can help our students and that are critical for our student's success. We right now have more DNF schools than any other district in the state, and we need to address that. And so as a teacher, as a mom, and as a taxpayer, I'm excited to get to share with you today.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you all for coming to this forum. My name is Lynn Gray. I represent District Seven Countywide. I'm the senior school board member, and this will be my third running. I've also had experience as a teacher in elementary, middle, and high school. I taught in the public, private, and home school. I have an experience record that includes overseeing a $4.4 billion budget, 245 schools, 220,000 students, 17, maybe 17.5,000 employees, vendors that many of you are in here today. I also want to mention my countywide emphasis. I have committees that are countywide. I've lived countywide, and so I wanted to make sure that we represent the entire county. Hillsborough, excuse me, Hillsborough Healthy Schools represents the mental and academic health of our students. And I think I'm out of time. Three priorities: fiscal sound, district, the mental and academic welfare of our students, and of course, an effective teacher in front of every one of our students.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Johnny Bush. I'm an educator 35 years. I've taught at the elementary, middle, high school, and at the college level. I was a teacher of deaf and hard of hearing students when I came here from St. Augustine, and I entered the administrative world in 2000. As an administrator, I was the administrator of discipline, administration, curriculum, and athletics. As the principal of Robinson High School, we brought the IB program to accreditation and earned the school's first A ever. As principal of HB Plant High School, we maintained academic excellence, and we were the number one school in the entire Bay Area my entire time there. If I say nothing more today, please know that my world is built around, if you don't feed the teachers, they eat the students.
Me, me, Osaiason. A vibrant public education system is essential for a well-functioning democracy. I would like to know how you, what plan you have to entice students back from private charter schools that are siphoning away our educational dollars?
This is Jen Flabot.
I think that's a multifaceted question. Right now, we're facing not just the choice voucher scenario, but we're looking at homeschoolers that are taking away from our public school dollars as well. As a prior homeschooling mother, I think everyone deserves their option for education. But I think what we need to do is look at how we can balance the budget better internally with the school board where the money, there's money enough to go around for everyone.
That is always a question that faces the public school system.
This is Karen Bendorf.
Especially when faced with private schools, with voucher system, with the option to home school. And as a teacher in the classroom, I know that people will bring their kids to public school when we are teaching kids to read. And my concern is that we are not doing that well in our classrooms. When I see students who come to me on a daily basis, and they're unable to read basic content at grade level, when they can't decode simple words, it causes me to be concerned and even question how they've been passed on year after year without those skills. And so in order to meet that need, to bring people back, we need to teach our kids to read. They need to be literate and numerate.
That was Karen Bendorf. This is Lynn Gray.
I fight with this as well, because I'm a competitor, and I want our kids to be in our public schools. We have the social services, the academic history of doing a very successful job. 27 of our magnet schools just received the national award for the entire nation, and we have the USA News, and a lot of the reports have our high schools ranking the top. But the bottom line is this, is it the pay that brings teachers? Not necessarily, but it darn well helps, because 13 of our counties that are around us have $6,000 to $30,000 more incentive for our teachers to not only teach there, but basically grow as a profession. We need to do a better job. We also, back to your point, the literacy is huge. That's our number one priority. It should always be. And Dr. Han in the audience has done a steadfast job promoting that, as we all do. Literacy, why is it in question? 13% of our students are English language learners, and then we have over 12,000 who are migrant, and we have 12,000 immigrants coming. And with Haiti, we might have more. So we have a lot of challenges. Thank you.
That was Lynn Gray. This is Johnny Bush.
First, I applaud parents who are looking out for their kids. And as a parent, that is your ultimate responsibility. Do what's best for your child. And if your child needs to be in a charter school or a private school, I get that. I get that. I just know that being one of seven kids, and to a single mom, and my mom bringing something to my mom saying, hey, I want to go to a private school or charter school, my mom would have said, no, I don't, we don't have the resource to get you there, you know? So is it really choice, and is it really, you know, for the have-nots? You know, that's a question of mine, always. And I've been through that part of everything. But my biggest thing is, if we make our schools better, why do we need to go to choice, I mean charter? If our schools are performing the way they should, if we have teachers in front of our kids, which is the ultimate, ultimate resource that we have, if we have teachers in front of our kids, they are going to make that difference, because they made that difference with me.
That was Johnny Bush, who is running for Hillsborough County School Board, District Seven Countywide. And before that, we heard his three opponents, incumbent Lynn Gray, and challengers Karen Bendorf and Jen Flabot. This is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. I'm Sean Conan, and I'd like to hear what you, I'd like to hear from you about this Hillsborough School Board Race, if you're listening live on the 19th of March. Do you know who you're voting for, or what education issues are important to you when you make your decision about voting for school board members? You can email DJ@WMNF.org or text 813-433-0885. I want to thank Jay, who wrote in from the 813 area code and said, "The arts must be protected in our schools. The world gets darker every day, and the artists and poets of tomorrow live right next door to you. Art is our mirror to the world. It reflects the light and dark of the world. Screaming or singing to the souls of the bleeding hearts of our inner children, the only way to pave the future is to look at it through the eyes of a child," says Jay. So thank you for that comment. You can make a comment as well. We're going to next hear the candidates' takes on two different questions, one about trust and the other about technology. You're listening to 88.5 FM WMNF Tampa.
Good afternoon. Patrick Murphy. I've got twin four-year-old boys that are getting ready to go into public school. For the candidates, how do you see applications and leveraging new and emerging technologies to try to fix some of the problems we have in our school system?
So technology, we're looking at a, say, USF Student Center. You're seeing students there that have the most up-to-date technology. Cell phones are a conduit for all types of information. The ESSER grant that we did have is earmarked, and it is spent, well, we have about $200 million, I think, left. But it is spent primarily on technology and the upgrades. We are now sitting where you're sitting. If this were a classroom, we're on one-to-one. In other words, every student has a laptop in front of them. The curriculum is now driven by technology on the laptop or at home. So it's essential that we are definitely keeping up. That's, you know, we're the seventh largest district in the nation, so to think about 220,000 students having one-to-one access in a classroom, that's a lot of support. We also are updating our mainframe to support the curriculums, and I'll go into that a little bit later. I'm out of time. Thanks.
That was Lynn Gray. This is Karen Bendorf.
Well, I'll answer. I'll jump right in there. It's exciting to have little ones start school, and as a prior kindergarten teacher, that is a very exciting year to watch kids come in as babies and we hope leave as readers, leave that kindergarten classroom as readers. And so while it's important that all of our students have access to the technology that's going to make them competitive in our schools, what's most important is that we're making sure that they have the basics, the foundational skills that are still so important and basic to their ability to learn to read, and to learn to work with numbers. And that should be our main focus as a district, to make sure that our kids are reading, and that those little ones are getting what they need.
This is Johnny Bush.
All right. So I'm the hall monitor at Jefferson High School, and I went from being a principal and retired, and I'm now the hall monitor at Jefferson. I am so impressed with the technology that students are learning with today in classrooms, and what teachers can do with that technology. Again, if we have the teachers in all the schools to guide these students through that technology, it's a great tool to have. I will say, me being a dinosaur, and my campaign team is very young, and I brought them on board because they are technology savvy. Technology is here to stay. It's the future, and we need to embrace it. And when you're talking about being in schools, again, I'm going to go back to changing those conditions that need to happen in schools, having people in front of our students to work them through this technology.
That was Johnny Bush. This is Jen Flabot.
Congratulations on twins, and that's very impressive. I wanted a complete opposite end of, I think, my panel's opinion on this. I said, I have three boys. I'm the oldest of seven kids, and I think we have to get back to the basics. I think COVID brought to our attention that technology is really not as friendly as we think it is, right? I think we need to look at our schools, and our teachers, and our administrative, and our staff, and see where we're failing fundamentally first, math, science, English, and language arts, and cursive writing, for that matter, not technology. I think, especially in the early ages. I know that, you know, all of our kids, those of us who have young kids, I mean, I have a 10-year-old who can handle things better on my phone sometimes than I can. That's not a problem. We don't have a problem with our kids learning technology. It's the opposite. They're too involved in technology. We shouldn't have cell phones in the classroom. And I'm really an advocate for not having early education have computers or laptops. I think they need to be learning the tactile and functioning classes, and talking to each other, and learning socialization, not how to work on a computer.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Andy Mays. I'm a partner at Shoemaker. I'm part of Shoemaker Advisors. I've had three children that have gone through the public school system, and I've gone to their school of choice and received scholarships. So thank you to all the educators and to our school board members. It's great to work on the children's board with you, Ms. Gray, and Principal Bush. It's great to see you again. I've been involved with several of the efforts to increase funding for the school district. And let me say, it's my perception that the community does not have a level of trust to invest further in education. I believe that the community wants to invest in education, but I don't believe that they have the trust necessary to allow them to invest in education. And so my question for each of you is, how do you build a culture of trust to allow us to invest further in our children's education?
Thank you. And we'll start with Ms. Bendorf with this one.
I think that, first of all, it's important that we work with our communities. We need community involvement. Our schools definitely need our community members, our community businesses, our community rotary clubs, and everyone who can commit to being, to working in our schools. We need that. We need those partnerships. We need the sports programs. Our district especially, we don't want to waste money in our budget, paying for things that our community could be helping us with. And it's sad that we don't have those relationships, and the community isn't trusting us right now. And I would love to be able to be elected and change that. I would love to have partnerships with our community members to be able to bring the resources that are all around us in the Tampa Bay area and in Hillsborough County to benefit our schools and our students in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, next, and then Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, for sharing that. Actually, that was an earlier discussion with another member here. Trust, it takes years to form a relationship, and then it takes a few more years to work with them and to develop trust. And right now, I think the forward movement and the forward thinking is, why aren't we, why aren't we closing our schools, or some of the schools that are not filled? And that's a very good question. It's a very important question. The other part of this question and conundrum is, when we had the Gates Grant, we had coaches, coaches, coaches. And that's a lot of instructional positions. And it was cut, many of them. Still a lot of instruction folks that are in the class, that do we really need to have them? But then, what you're really conflicting that statement with, how effective are you as a teacher if you're taking all the supports, or many of the supports academically, from the students? So, you know, it's a very difficult balance. Thank you.
So I had two daughters that went through Hillsborough County Public Schools, and I was fortunate enough to be their principal at Plant High School. It's a beautiful thing. When you talk about that trust, at some point, we've got to say, this is Hillsborough County. I've been here since 1997, and I wouldn't go anywhere else in the world. But we've got to start thinking about our kids coming back, and other people's kids coming back, and keeping our community great. Every district around us is figuring out a way to get more money to their teachers, and talk about how they support education, because they want their kids to come back. I supervised four interns last year from two local universities, and not one of them took a job in Hillsborough County. And two of them graduated from Hillsborough County Schools. They're right across the bridge. So we've got to start talking about community, and being together as a community, and bringing our kids back, because I, like many of you, would like to have my grandkids here someday and in this district. And hopefully, we're going to build that.
I think it's primarily about transparency, right? We don't have very much transparency on this board currently. We need to be able to sit down after eight years and look at a budget, line item by line item, and say, where are we failing? And nobody has been willing to do that to date. We've had numerous, you know, people come up and ask. We filed FOIAs. We've done everything we can to try to get transparency. And I think that's where the trust starts, is transparency. If this board isn't willing to be transparent, then it's time for change. And that's one of the main reasons why I decided to run. We need the transparency. We also need people on the board who are willing to stick to what they're going to stay and what they're going to represent. We don't need someone flipping on a seat because they're, or on a vote because their election is up, or their seat is up. We need strong people to be there, be transparent, and work and reach with our community and our constituents, to be good stewards of their money. At the end of the day, it's not our money. It's your money. And if we aren't being responsible with that, then we need to make an adjustment.
That was Jen Flabot, who is running for Hillsborough County School Board, District Seven Countywide. Before that, we heard her three opponents, Johnny Bush, Karen Bendorf, and incumbent Lynn Gray. This is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. I'm Sean Conan, and I'd like to hear from you about this school board race in Hillsborough County. Do you know who you're voting for, or do you have some education issues that are important to you when you make your decision about voting for school board members in your county? You can text us at 813-433-0885. Please sign your name. You can also email us at DJ@WMNF.org. We have a text from the 813 area code, and says, "School bus driver here. Having been involved in a minor traffic accident, and having the deputy come on the bus and ask the children who are middle school age for their home addresses and a parent's phone number. And approximately three out of a busload of 32 knew their home address. That's appalling in and of itself," says this bus driver. He says he's received letters of apology where an eighth grader can't spell basic words like aisle, while, et cetera. Something definitely needs to be done." So thank you to that school bus driver for that note. And as an aside, I don't know if somebody asked me for someone else's phone number. There are very, very, very few phone numbers besides my own, and maybe the radio stations that I can remember. So maybe we could cut people a little bit of slack there. That's just my editorial comment. So we're going to hear more from this District Seven Countywide Hillsborough County School Board. We're going to hear from the candidates. I'm getting some emails. I'll read them next time. Here are some candidates. When they get questions about book bans and fiscal policy, you're listening live on the 19th of March to a District Seven Hillsborough County School Board Candidate Forum that was held last Friday by the Tampa Tiger Bay Club, and we're bringing to you the audio recordings of that. So here is that question about book bans, and then a second question about fiscal policy.
Jerry Friddella, retired New York City public school teacher, 21 years. I don't understand why students are allowed to read a book like this. There are over 150 books, and I just want to read one sentence, and I will polish up the language. We're each busting a something into this bottle. If you don't do something, you have to drink it. I fail to see what kind of literary intelligence, or how this raises the level of intelligence or curiosity of our students. Junior high school, and I understand it's required reading, not voluntary, but required.
Again, there are a lot of books that I don't agree with, that are in media centers. I think that our district has a plan in place right now, and if that plan needs to be tweaked, then we need to look at the plan of how we go about judging books and what we should be doing with books. So I think if books are being brought to our attention, then we are going to review that book with the process that we have in place. If the process is not working, then we need to figure out how we're going to tweak that. I am a believer in age-appropriate material, and maybe we need to get to a point to where we look at what's age-appropriate that's in our media centers. But I'm not a fan of all books, but I'm not a fan of banning all books.
Ms. Flabot, am I pronouncing that correctly? I'm sorry if I'm not.
No, you are. You're fine.
Thank you.
You wouldn't be the first one to get it wrong, so you're fine. So this obviously is a very hot topic, right? We see in the news. We know that this is, this is right front and center in the media. Everyone loves to hop on this topic. At the end of the day, it did bring to light some things that we need to reevaluate, and that is our library associations and our media center specialists may or may not have the ability to put books that are not age-appropriate in certain schools. We cannot ban books. That's unconstitutional. We know this. We can, however, put a grading system on books, or work with legislation, which is what I tried to do when I'm up in Tallahassee, and lobby for them to, to help us with publishers to maybe grade books correctly, so that we don't have books like this in kindergarten through eighth grade, or other books that high schoolers could use to get on gay dating sites with adults. And those aren't appropriate, right? Do we ban history books? No. Do we try to take away history that happened? I don't think so. Are there things in the books, or content in the books, that may or may not be questionable for a certain age group? Yes. But do we teach that history at a high school level and grade those books appropriately? Absolutely.
All right, down the line here, Ms. Bendorf.
So I'm really glad you asked that question. You know, the topic of book banning has been mentioned so many times. And when I hear that word banning, it's a misnomer, first of all, and it's a red herring, because what our school district is doing when we're protecting our students from explicit sexual content and other things that are not appropriate for them, is we're protecting our children. And any parent with a minor child can still access that content from a public library, or from Amazon at the tip of their finger, and they can still get that. But we have a job in our school system to protect our students. And parents, me being one of them, and as a teacher in a classroom every day, I want to know as a parent and a teacher, that when my kids are in school, that they are protected, and they're not going to have to view that type of content in any literature.
Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Friddella, for that question. I think the, if literacy is a big subject, and it certainly is, and the basic literacy numeracy, I think we have to look at books very, very carefully, and especially the principle, the theme of banning or eliminating books. When you eliminate books, you eliminate thoughts. When you eliminate thoughts, you eliminate and limit a child's education. And without the perspective of very, all kinds of viewpoints and diversity, then we're subtracting the absolute reality that our child will have to face when they graduate. Now, the process, we only had two books that were taken out of the library since, I mean, the process is this. You have filtering systems, American Library Association. You have the children's core curriculum. You have the elementary, middle school, high school, senior high school core. Then you have a media specialist who has a master's. Then it goes to a committee, a district. First, it's the in-school committee, then it goes to the district committee. So there are so many filters that are democratic in this particular process. It is a great one, and it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, Alicia Whiting-Bosich. I'm an attorney at Carlin Fields. I have a 10-year-old that goes to public schools here in Hillsborough County. We were talking a lot today, and I'm going to piggyback on Andy's question about trust in the community. Fiscally, do you, can you give me concrete examples of how you, as a board member, will hold the school, the school district accountable in terms of fiscability? I know people that work in the administrative, and I heard there's a lot of redundancies that make the administrative aspect of our school district very inefficient. So can you give me some concrete examples of how you're going to push that money from the administrative people, when there's 10, maybe you only need three, and push it back down to the teachers?
I think we were starting with Ms. Bendorf.
A $4 billion budget has a lot of place for hidden things. And we do need transparency in our county. And I can tell you as a classroom teacher that there are several places where I see waste right away in our district that we, that I know we can find. One of those is every few years, when, when every teacher in the county gets the new curriculum resources that are sent out to all the classrooms, when a teacher's only using one of those resources, that's extreme waste in our district. When we When we have underutilized properties and our schools aren't full and we have things, properties that aren't being used to be able to turn a profit, that is extreme waste. When we aren't looking at contracts that we have with the district to see how much is this actually costing us? How much is this technology costing us? How much is this app costing us? We have a lot of questions, and I have a lot of questions that I would like to be able to ask when I'm elected to the school board.
Ms. Gray.
Well, the, excuse me. The big question is, how did we do it in the past and how are we going to sustain in the future? In the past, from the Gates Grant, and I mention this because I taught for also almost 30-something years, where we had new positions, principal, coach, and some, Johnny, you might remember that. But we had coaches for everything. And then superintendent Davis, we hired from the outside. Whether we like him or not, he did end a lot of those positions. And for that matter, you go to certain schools, and I'll give you an example, Blake, did take some of the personality. That's a performing arts school. So how many schools do we have that love the arts, love the music programs? Well, we took a lot of that out. Now, what kind of school and what kind of competition does that lend us? Not much. Okay, so we did that. Conversely, when the Plant, Plant High School roofs were collapsing, air conditioning wasn't working. Some of you might remember that. Kids were going into classrooms, teachers were going to the classrooms in heat that was over 80 degrees. We went out in 2018 for a referendum to help with the delayed maintenance. And that has been, that oversight committee has done a marvelous job. So there's checks and balances. You've got to do, you have to spend the money to keep the district running. You can't just subtract, subtract. And I think we did a lot with the instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
It's in my opinion that our budget is balanced on the backs of our students and teachers. If we had the teachers and we, in front of our students, then we wouldn't have classes of 39 and 42. And I hear from Plant, Robinson, Brandon, Riverview, I see it at Jefferson. You know, our budget right now is balanced on the backs of our teachers and students. We wouldn't have these oversight classes. I'm going to ask you to tell me how you care about kids. We allow that many kids to be in a classroom. Everything I do will be surround, will be to be better for our kids here with our kids' best interests in mind. So again, when I say that we need that valuable resource of teachers in front of us, and you're asking that question, that's one of the things. We need to be transparent on our school board. We need to have dedicated time. This is the one I may go over a few minutes on, or a few seconds on, but we need to have that dedicated time at every board member to talk about the vacancies that we've lost or that have been created and the vacancies that we picked up. But we need to have a little more transparency about that. That's that concrete answer that we're looking for.
Thank you. Ms. Flabow.
I don't think I'm going to be able to say transparency enough today. Transparency, transparency, transparency. At the end of the day, we don't have it, right? So that's where we start. We have to look at this budget as a whole, line item by line item, and find out where it is. I don't think there's a person up here or on the board who can, who can confidently say that we know every dollar that is going out of our budget. And I've, I've reviewed part of it. There are embedded, there's embedded curriculum that we're paying for that I can't find it anywhere. There are teachers that are off-site, that are counselors that are off-site that are getting paid that aren't inside of our schools or inside of our classrooms. Why? Why do we have this? Why isn't it addressed by the board? And I think that that's one of our largest problems. It's transparency. We have to get somebody up there who's not afraid to call and say the hard things. And yeah, we have inadequacies. We need to fix them. This is a marathon. It's not a sprint. It's not going to happen overnight. But we have to get somebody up there willing to put themselves out there and do that. And I'm not afraid to do that. I'm not afraid to sit up and say, guys, this is where we're at. We've got to just keep plugging forward and make a change.
That was Jen Flabow, who is running for Hillsborough County School Board District Seven countywide. Before that, we heard her three opponents, Johnny Bush and incumbent Lynn Gray and challenger Karen Bendorf. Next, we're going to hear the candidates' answers about a community investment tax and fiscal matters. This is Tuesday Cafe, broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. I'm Sean Conan.
Thank you, Joseph Sechar. We have a tax, community investment tax is going to be coming up for sunset. For the record, are you in favor of the reinstatement of that CIT tax? And please explain what you're going to do to help get that tax reinstated. If you're against it being reinstated, please tell us how you're going to get the funds that that tax is provided.
Ms. Gray, are you able to answer this?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. The CIT tax, we've had it for over 25 years. It's been generally assumed, very, very, very wrongly so assumed, that we would get it again. And that covers capital funding. Capital funding means buildings. And buildings right now, if we go to South County, I don't have to tell any of you that are living in South County, Southeast County, it's, the tremendous population flow is unbelievable. For example, Powell Beach, 413 units are going up just in that area, and that will be completed by next year. We have tremendous amount of, let's just say, we don't have the public space, the public school space to really fulfill it. I am for the CIT tax. I think that is a very easy way of saying I am for being one who is for the prosperity of future school buildings. And good schools make good communities. So I'm for it. Thank you.
Mr. Bush.
So the community investment tax, if we get rid of that, if we're not allowed to have that again, that, that hurts our school. You don't take money out of our schools. And it's not as much as people think it is, which is why we will, you know, which is why the board will vote on a possible millage. But we don't take money out of our schools. And if that's on that table, we need to keep that in our schools. We talk about building other schools. I also want to talk about the fact that we've got to keep the schools we have. You know, we've got, the schools that we have, we've got to be creative around what we do with them and not close them. I don't see a need to close a school or, you know, when, when there are kids in that area that we can attract to that school by putting in the different magnet programs in those schools if that needs to happen. But again, as far as the community investment tax, I don't believe in taking money from our school.
That was Johnny Bush. This is Jen Flabow.
I publicly have voted and asked the board to vote for not increasing the, not having the tax and also not increasing the millage. I think that first and foremost, we have to balance the current, balance the current budget. We're looking, we're closing down schools to further crowd other schools when we have perfectly good buildings that are sitting there that may need some love and tender care, but we have to find the money within our current budget. We don't put out a fire by throwing gasoline on it. We have to put out that fire by figuring out the best way to douse it and how it started. And I don't think that we do that by increasing our taxes. I also don't think that that tax helps our teachers. If we're already talking about them having too low of salaries, if we're increasing a millage rate and taxing our community, how is that helping them? There's single moms out there like myself. I have, I have three boys that I raise by myself. There's single dads out there. There's teachers who are head of household, which is mind-blowing when you think about how little they make. You're going to add a millage rate tax to them over the course of the year that could be the reason that they can't keep their lights on. Why would we do that without first looking at our current issues in the budget and fixing them?
Well, I'm always a fan of a tax cut. And I know the question was, how do we replace those funds?
This is Karen Bendorf.
We are likely going to have a CIT decrease if, if we get that. And I wouldn't be a proponent of, of the referendum for a tax increase for a millage rate either. I, I think that we need to look at what we already have, and we haven't done a good enough job being accountable with what is already in our budget to be able to go and ask the taxpayers for more. I think your question to how we get the funds to replace that is a great one. And I think as board members, those are things that I would love to be able to, to ask and talk with other board members about, to be able to find ways that we can replace those funds and that we can use the funds that we already have in better ways to help our students in our schools.
Hello, thank you. I'm Norine Dollard, and I want to stay on the fiscal train that is starting here. As you know, education is funded by the federal government, the state, and local revenues. And not all money is discretionary. There are a lot of strings that the state imposes, state-funded mandates. How do you propose to use those more discretionary funds to maximize your goals, whether it's teacher pay, classroom size reduction, reading? I'd like to hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Bush.
So as a board member, I would definitely really fight for higher-based student allocation from the state. And that way, we will get more funds to, to pay our teachers, to, to run our, to operate our school district here. That's going to take, when someone asks about that, that's going to take more of the state of Florida voting for that and understanding that our education system in Florida is suffering, and we need to have more funds coming down from the states to our schools. That's a huge thing. So we will definitely be a part of a group that really fights and pushes for higher-based student allocation. $8,000 per kid in a school does not pay, does not take care of a lot of things that we need to have happening in our schools.
That was Johnny Bush. This is Lynn Gray.
Thanks, Mrs. Dollard, Ms. Dollard, excuse me, for that question. Discretionary income that we have, very, very good question because how do we use it? Well, we're talking about the need for literacy, and we are now looking at the science of reading. It's a huge phonics-based program where we're investing a lot of money because we know, if I said 13% of English language learners are coming in our schools or, and are in our schools that do not know the language, we certainly are spending that money wisely, discretionary funds. How about the mental health? Mental health of our students is a very huge conundrum problem. It affects all of us. We are spending that discretionary monies on mental health programs. We have about five different agencies that we are looking at for the kids to have that support. Plus, we have Hazel, that's an online mental health type of outreach for kids to be able to get the necessary social, emotional help. And that's some of the examples of discretionary expenditures.
Yeah, Ms. Bendorf, go ahead. Thanks.
I think it's important that when we have the ability to decide where our funds are going, that they're going to our students' learning. Because our first job as a school district is to teach our students. That's our job. And sometimes we get so focused on other things, and, and mental health is a, is a big issue in, in our schools and in our, in our culture. And there are lots of other things that are big issues. But we have to focus as a school district on what it's our job and our position to do. And that is to teach children to read and write and work with numbers. And sometimes we get focused on everything else, and we need to bring it all back to what is happening in the classroom to help these students learn. Do they, do we need extra hands in a classroom? That might be a great place for discretionary spending because the more hands a teacher has, the better those kids are going to learn.
That was Karen Bendorf. This is Jen Flabow.
I think that discretionary funds definitely come with strings, right? And I think that was a very valid point to, to bring up. We have to look at those funds and figure out where the parameters are and what we can use them for, of course. But I would agree, education and our curriculum is, is first and foremost in how we focus on where we have any discretionary funds. I think second to that, we also look at, once we've balanced the budget, where and what facilities need to be worked on, improved upon, and brought up to date so that we don't have any more of these school closures. I think we, we're looking at closing schools and crowding classrooms, and that's counterproductive to helping our kids and our teachers learn more effectively. So if we have discretionary money, we need to look at the most immediate need. And what I'm seeing, that's where I would focus it on first. But again, until we actually have transparency in the budget and we know where our shortcomings are, we can't really give a solid answer as to where we can place those discretionary funds.
That was Jen Flabow, who is running for Hillsborough County School Board District Seven countywide. Before that, we heard her three opponents, Karen Bendorf, incumbent Lynn Gray, and challenger Johnny Bush. This is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting live on March 19th from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. I'm Sean Conan, and I'd like to hear from you about this Hillsborough school board race or about any educational issues that you'd like to comment on. Do you know who you're voting for or what issues are important to you when you make your decision about voting for school board members? You can email us at dj@wmnf.org. You can text 813-433-0885. Got a text from Gemini who says, "I think the volume of work we put on our students has a tendency to burn them out." So thanks for that comment, Gemini. Also, Dave in North Tampa says, "I was wondering what was real, what would really separate the candidates?" And then he concludes that "The CIT and millage discussion answered it for me." Dave says, "We need to flip the Hillsborough B.O.C.C., the Board of County Commissioners, because they destroy our schools as well." So thanks for that comment from Dave in North Tampa and from Gemini. You can comment as well at 81, at, at text at 813-433-0885 or email dj@wmnf.org. Well, let's continue with this conversation. Next up, we're going to hear the candidates talk about a newly passed Florida bill that allows chaplains in public schools. This is WMNF Tampa.
Laura Tucker, president of the Hillsborough County Democratic Public Education Caucus. And my question is, the legislature just passed a bill allowing school chaplains on Florida school campuses. It allows students, it allows the school district to choose whether or not they want to participate in that program. If elected, would you vote to allow a volunteer school chaplain in our schools? If yes, what role do you see a school chaplain would fill? If not, how would you convince other board members to block the adoption of this policy?
We're going to start with our incumbent on this one, Ms. Gray.
And that's a great question, Laura. I, I believe that the religious part of the agenda, sometimes there are, there's a lot of agenda carried through with a religious entity. I think we have enough of those churches and supports all around every school. And I have lived in this county, every part of this county, and know for a fact that we have institutions that definitely take care of that. Now, having a school chapel, chaplain, I, it, it sounds good, but how do you regulate it? And how, what, what kind of oversight do you have as to how many, how that outreach is occurring? Will it turn into more of a religious, like the Christian athletes? We had to separate that because it was getting to be much more than just a athletic club. It was spreading a religious thought wave throughout the school. So, you know, a lot of this has to be supported with regulation. And without that knowledge, for me, I'm not for it at this time. Thank you.
Is that me?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
We have first priority in clubs. We have fellowship of Christian athletes in clubs. We have a lot of student-led clubs. That word student is the most important part of that. As a high school principal at Robinson and at Plant, we allow kids to lead with adults being the club sponsors, but they did not have the, the say in all of that. They did not, they did not promote the clubs. The kids did the work with that. And it gave kids that sense of freedom to join many different clubs. So as far as having a chaplain in, I, I'm not a fan of the adult-led part of that and that it may spill over to wanting other people on our campuses as well. So as of right now, until I find out more about that, until I research that more, I like student-led clubs. I like teacher-sponsored clubs or educators-to-sponsored, excuse me, clubs. Thank you.
That was Johnny Bush. This is Karen Bendorf.
I would have to say that I would have a lot more questions before I can answer that. I think it's a, I think that, that question itself leads to a lot of other questions that I would have to know the answer to before I would be able to make a decision on that.
This is Jen Flabow.
I agree. I think that's a very open-ended, you know, issue. It leads to, that could lead to many other issues. I also agree with Mr. Bush on this and the fact that, you know, who are we putting on our school campuses? At the end of the day, they're there to learn. And where I respect freedom of religion, I think that the student-led concept, it, to me, seems more of a feasible idea and maybe putting it as a club instead of a chaplain. I, again, would also have to research more on what the parameters were that were passed in that.
That was Jen Flabow, who is running for Hillsborough County School Board District Seven countywide. Before that, we heard her three opponents, Karen Bendorf, Johnny Bush, and incumbent Lynn Gray. This is Tuesday Cafe, broadcasting from the studios of WMNF Tampa. I'm Sean Conan. We have about five minutes left in the show, and the responses for the candidates in this next, for this next question are a little bit longer than six minutes. So I'm going to play it, but I'm not going to get to play everybody. So apologize if So apologize if your favorite candidate gets left off here. I will post the full audio of this answer to this question on wmnf.org. So here is their long question that they're going to get about a millage tax increase. And it starts with Jen LeBeau, the answer. So here they're talking about a millage increase again.
How do you justify a millage increase with the following points I'm going to make? And like I said, as of today, just reported, Hillsborough County School District has 42 schools that are 60% or less of capacity of that number, 13 at 50% or less. This is not a new problem. Y'all have not been good stewards of the public's money. When you look at insurance crisis, we have an insurance crisis. That is real. People are getting notices every day in their mailbox telling them that their mortgage payments are increasing. You have an affordable housing issue. Even people that rent apartments, what do you think those apartments developers are going to do? They're going to pass it on to the tenants in addition to homeowners. We have, it's hard to buy groceries with inflation right now. People are hurting. You have the most D schools in the state of Florida. And this will jeopardize the CIT tax in two ways. Number one, it would jeopardize it as a whole. But number two, you may not get none of it by putting this on the millage. Every industry right now has a problem with labor, whether it's the plumber to the architects. So just to say that it's teachers is not fair to use that as justification. I'd like an answer, how do you justify putting a millage on the ballot?
You don't, you can't. You cannot justify this. And I have spoken about this at the board meetings. You cannot justify a military rate increase right now. We cannot as a board, there's numerous members in this audience, we cannot as a board and a county justify putting a military rate on anyone. And you're right, it's not just the teachers. When I say, how are the teachers going to be able to afford this? It's everybody. It's me, it's my neighbors, it's the people across the street, and it is. It's the architects down to the tile installers. You cannot expect that everyone right now with the current inflation rate is going to be able to handle a millage increase because we aren't good stewards of the budget. I think the solution to that, again, is get that budget transparent, get it balanced, and let's see where we have a deficit and how we fix it from there. You cannot throw gasoline on that fire with the example of a millage increase. It's not justifiable at all. You have to look at this as a business, not as a school system. We have to look at it as a business. If we were balancing this business's budget, would we ask everybody else to take on the tax? No, we would fix it ourselves.
Well, that was Jen LeBeau, one of the candidates that's running for school board. I apologize to Karen Bendorf, Lynn Gray, and Johnny Bush, but I will put their responses to this question on our website, wmnf.org. The election is in August. There's a Hillsborough School Board meeting this afternoon at 4:00, coincidentally. And those four candidates who are running for Hillsborough County School Board District 7, which is a countywide seat. I want to thank our phone screener, John Dunn. Sorry I didn't put you to much work today, John. We had a lot of audio to play. You've been listening to Tuesday Cafe. I'm Sean Canaan, News and Public Affairs Director at WMNF Tampa. During this time slot tomorrow, Shelley Reback will host Midpoint, and her guests will review the legal and medical status of reproductive rights and technologies in Florida. Shelley's guests are a lawyer and a fertility specialist. They'll discuss the Alabama in vitro fertilization law and the Florida abortion ballot measure, as well as the pending six-week abortion ban in Florida. Coming up next, after the NPR news headlines, is Wave Makers with Janet and Tom Scherberger. Today, they're asking the question, what's the matter with Sarasota? The once quiet corner of moderate Republicans has turned into the center of right-wing politics in America. Janet and Tom will talk about Sarasota's political transformation with school board member Tom Edwards and Ron Filipowski, former president of the Sarasota Republican Club, who now exposes the right-wing threat to our democracy. You have been listening to Tuesday Cafe, coming to you live on March 19th, 2024, from the studios of WMNF Tampa. We also broadcast to Sarasota, St. Petersburg, and Lakeland. Thanks so much for supporting Community Radio. You can always make a donation at wmnf.org. This is WMNF Tampa.